Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of November twenty six. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Thomas.
Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Here. Trustee Hygman. Here. Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Roman. Here. Trustee Obit. Here. President Hope.
Here. Representing staff this evening, to my left, our village manager, Numpoli and Haney, to my right, our village attorney, Chris Cummings. To the audience is right, our police chief, Denise McGrath, fire chief, Bob Gubowski, community and economic development director, Angela Maseras, public works director, Dash Furman, and assistant public works director, excuse me, assistant village manager, Aaron Zachle. In the audience is Noah Sherman, our assistant director of community development and economic development. The minutes of November twelfth, any additions or corrections? Trustee Harris.
None.
Trustee Mason. Trustee Roman. Trustee Obit. We have a motion to approve the minutes, please. They're moved by trustee Obit, seconded by trustee Mason. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis. Hi. Trustee Harris Jones. Hi. Trustee Hygman. Hi. Trustee Mason. Hi. Trustee Roman. Hi. Trustee Obit. Hi.
The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and eight cents. Again, trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee. Trustee Mason. No questions. Trustee Roman. Trustee Obit.
No questions.
We have a motion to approve the claims list, please.
The move.
Been moved by trustee Mason, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis. Hi. Trustee Harris Jones. Hi. Trustee Hygman. Hi. Trustee Mason. Hi. Trustee Roman. Hi. Trustee Obit. Hi.
The claims list is approved. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am. Elizabeth? Come on up. Sure, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Kay, and I'm a leadership coach and consultant. I served on the Economic Development Committee of the Village of Homewood for a number of years, some years ago. My family moved to Homewood thirty years ago from Hyde Park because of excellent parks, library, schools, baseball, but especially Isaac Walton. I go to Isaac daily now to practice Tai Chi. And this morning gave me a special thrill because I heard, as some of you may have today, Sandhill cranes overhead migrating through. These are magnificent birds. They are four feet high with a six-foot wingspan. People drive to Indiana to see them, but because of Isaac, we can see them here. My Tai Chi spotted Isaac is just across from Homewood disposal by the North Pond. And I learned this month that toxic chemicals are being released into the North Pond twenty-four seven through an outlet pipe. These toxic chemicals greatly exceed the EPA standards for safe water, yet we have people who catch fish and eat them from this water and pets who swim and drink this water. I ask that the village board make it a priority to immediately and fully test the Isaac Prairie Lakes so we can quantify the extent of the problem and then stop the inflow of the polluted water and clean the lakes so we can all use them safely. Prioritize urgent now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Liz Farmacki, South Suburbs for Green Space, again. And I'm here tonight to talk about the toxic pollution at Isaac Walton. And I want to talk about it in terms of responsibility. So please be patient with a metaphor that I think will help elucidate the issue. The village issues permits for repairs and improvements to properties within the village. If a resident doesn't obtain a permit or abide by the stipulations in the permit, then the village fines the resident. If a property owner isn't maintaining their property per the village's codes, the property owner has to repair the property at their own expense and/or pay a fine if they do not make their repairs within thirty days. But when the village violates the MS four permit issued by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency that is meant to protect our wetlands from illicit discharge, they claim that they don't know who the responsible party is. The Village of Homewood, through the former director of Public Works, told Isaac Walton that they would split the cost of water and sediment testing with the foundation. This test was performed a year ago. The Village of Homewood never paid their portion of the testing cost to the Isaac Walton Foundation, stipping them. Now, the Village of Homewood is proposing to have more testing done due to public attention and outcry over the issue and years-long requests from Isaac Walton. However, despite not paying their half of the initial testing, the village wants the Isaac Walton Board to agree to split the cost of much-needed additional testing of toxic pollution from a stormwater drain that the Village of Homewood is responsible for as per the permit issued to the village. So to return to our metaphor, asking Isaac Walton to bear even a partial portion of the expense of the Village of Homewood's responsibility per its stormwater drain permit would be like asking a neighbor who reported an issue with a property to split the cost of their repairs with the property owner. This is obviously ridiculous. The responsibility for testing, stopping the pollution, and remediation of the prairie lakes lies solely with the village.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Mr. Haney, would you care to make?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. So, a lot of times you hear a lot of information from people in the community. Well-intended people. I just wanted to share some factual information from the EPA and from the village. So bear with me. Thanks to Chris Cummings, we were able to send to the I E P A documents that clearly describe and establishes the Prairie Lake Stormwater Detention Facility as a stormwater detention facility. During my conversation two weeks ago with the I E P A, it was explained that the I E P A needed to make sure they, as a regulatory agency, had, in fact, jurisdiction over Prairie Lakes. Prairie Lakes would need to be categorized as a Waters of the U.S. or Woots for I E P A jurisdiction authority. I explained to the I E P A that Prairie Lakes was, in fact, a stormwater detention facility and not a Waters of the U.S. The I E P A asked that the village could provide documentation showing the planning and/or construction of the property as a stormwater facility. The I E P A also requested a copy of the Isaac Walton's lease, which is like one-hundred-year lease, to oversee the facility and other stormwater path and outfall documentation. All of this information requested was sent on last meet at the I E P A as it relates to Isaac Walton Reserve. I spoke with John Brickman. He's the president of Isaac Walton Reserve and asked if Isaac Walton would be willing to share the cost of a more complete and comprehensive water quality study. After an Isaac Walton Preserve Board meeting, John Brickman called me back and shared the following email. Let me read the email. To me, my colleague, says, "Gents, I shared your email yesterday with your request to our entire board, part of the board meeting last night. We had a serious debate about the issues at the meeting. Let me make a few points in response. Number one, although we have asked repeatedly, we cannot get Brian Environmental to send us a paid-in-full invoice. Our treasury reports that we have paid them a total of six thousand twenty dollars. Your village's portion would therefore be three thousand ten dollars. What further documentation do you need in order to make this payment to us? Number two, by allowing this continuing pollution of discharge into the prairie lakes, we believe the village is in noncompliance with the monitoring requirements of this MS four permit. Number three, although not unanimous, we did approve your request for H I W P to share fifty-fifty in the expense of the next level of testing with our portion not to exceed seven thousand five hundred, provided that we can review the request for proposal prior to its issuance. Number four, we decline to be a formal party to the next contract for testing, but we also request to review that report and its conclusion. Number five, we desire to work cooperatively with the village to address this problem and ultimately find a solution and will provide our level of expertise as requested. So we're going to go into next steps. We are moving forward with creating the scope of the request for qualifications for a full, comprehensive study. The I E P A works slower than we prefer, so I asked Angela Masaros to connect me with someone in the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, or CMAP. I was looking for someone that had experience in stormwater matters. The goal was to find someone that could provide third-party independent technical assistance as we prepare our request for qualification to identify consultants able to perform a comprehensive stormwater quality testing and provide stormwater facility stewardship recommendations. We connected with Angela's contact on Monday of last week. Her name is Ms. Holly Hudson. She is a senior aquatic biologist at CMAP with over twenty-five years of experience in the study, management and rehabilitation of water ecosystems, and the coordination, training, and education of volunteer lake monitors. And she's trained in providing technical assistance to the general public and local governments. Forgive me, this is long. Bear with me. Holly also shared during our phone call that she was intimately familiar with Prairie Lake Stormwater Detention Facility because she was involved with the facility when she was part of the Northeastern Illinois Planning Commission. Upon Holly's request, I sent her a copy of the draft Brian study that was co-shared between Public Works and Isaac Walton Preserve. On Monday of last week, I sent Holly the documents previously sent to the I E P A stormwater and outfall map documents. So I E P A, as it relates to I E P A, I received the below email on Thursday of last week from Malik Carroll. Hello, Nicole, and I believe the documents you provided last week, we have the information we need. The Water Quality Standards Group will review the additional information and will update you with their recommendation. So the village will be moving forward, and Isaac Walton has agreed to share the cost. And I talked to John Brickman today, and we finally received the full Brian study costs, so we will be putting a three-thousand-dollar payment on next week's and next week's December tenth claims list. So we're working with Isaac Walton. We love him. They're our partners. We're gonna make this happen.
With that being said, chief, votes of office.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are promoting a firefighter to lieutenant and a lieutenant to captain. With the retirement of Captain Tom Gaskin last month, they created an opening on the red shift. Tom back there. Tom put in twenty-six years. We want to thank Tom for his service. With his retirement, again, that opened up two spots, lieutenant and Tom Shift is Jason President. He was promoted to captain by Fire Police Commission. And then Matt Moran, firefighter, was promoted to move up to take Jason's spot as lieutenant. So we're gonna start with Matt first. Matt was born in Los Angeles, the oldest of four children. He came to Chicago to attend the University of Chicago where he met his wife Elizabeth. After graduating from college, he worked downtown writing software for sack traders. He and Elizabeth were married, bought a house in Homewood, and started a family. He had three children, Aaron, Anna, and Mary. After several years of working for day traders, Matt became dissatisfied. Looking for something a little bit different, started on the Homewood Fire Department as a part-time firefighter in nineteen ninety-nine. He was recruited by his president, started there in two thousand four, worked there for a couple of years, and come to Homewood in two thousand six. Since two thousand six, he's been involved with a number of different certifications, to the advanced firefighter, advanced fire officer, advanced fire apparatus engineer, multiple other certifications for some specialty team work that we do. Matt looks forward to serving Homewood as the next fire lieutenant, and this time I'll ask him to come up and take the oath from office.
I'm State May.
I'm Nick Ryan.
And we've been appointed to the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
Yeah, it's a fire lieutenant.
With the religious Homewood.
With the religion.
Salmon, I swear.
Salmon, swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood.
And the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge
You know, faithfully discharge.
my duties to the justice of my ability.
It's official. Okay, next up is independent president who's been now promoted to captain. I call him McGyver. As a kid, Jason grew up around the Homewood Fire Department. Both his grandfather and father were on the departments. I'm sure many people here remember. Jason joined as a cadet in nineteen ninety-five. He completed his basic firefighter, EMT, and paramedic and his F A E while he was still a part-time firefighter. He was very actively involved in both the dive and tactical rescue teams here in Homewood and with Mavis. Jason was hired full-time in two thousand two. He has since obtained several other fire officer certifications, advanced firefighter, advanced fire officer, and other certifications for the specialty teams. Jason's actively involved with our maintenance committee on the fire department. I cannot tell you how much money he has saved at Homewood. So before anything goes off to repair or even thought about, we say, can Jason fix it first? So Jason's the first guy that we go to when we've got a problem, but he'll be heading up the maintenance committee with his new promotion. He's here tonight with his wife Melanie and their son Dylan and their daughter Kylie. At this time, I will have Jason come up for us, sorry.
I'm State May.
Hi, Jason President.
And we've been appointed to
And we've been appointed to
the Office of Fire Captain.
Fire Captain.
By the village of Homewood.
By the village of Homewood.
Salmon, I swear.
Salmon, swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances.
And the municipal ordinances.
Of the village of Homewood.
Of the village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as fire captain.
My duty as fire captain.
And the best of my
The best of my
Ms. Maseras, the highlights of the downtown parking study.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight's staff will present the parking study and redevelopment proposal related to the village hall parking lot located directly behind village hall at twenty-twenty-four Chestnut Road. We'll begin with a brief overview of the history of the parking lot. The property was at one-time residential, and in the mid-twentieth century, property was converted into a public parking lot. The lot has a hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces.
Excuse me. Turn this to hit that first light switch. The second light switch closest to the water. Hand sanitizer. Sorry.
Got it? Oh, I will wait. Can you see it? Or? Well, I can continue. The lot has a hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces. It serves village hall, staff, and visitors to village hall. It also is used after hours for additional downtown public parking and for events. It is free public parking on evenings and weekends.
All right, we'll watch this.
It's a nice tune. There you go. You got it. All right. So in two thousand and five, the village had developed a downtown master plan which identified the parking lot as a short-term redevelopment opportunity. It met several of the goals of the plan, including increasing housing close to the train station, developing larger, underutilized properties that are off the tax rolls, which would bring in additional property tax revenue, and closing the large gaps between the central shopping area, village hall, and the train station to make the area more walkable and uniform. In two thousand six, the property was rezoned from public lands to downtown commercial to promote the redevelopment. Multiple parcels were consolidated into one, and the developer proposals were solicited from the village. In two thousand seven, developer was selected for a condominium building that was not constructed. And in twenty eighteen, another residential proposal was considered. As part of the analysis, a parking study was conducted to evaluate the proposal's impact. Today, we have a new residential proposal and recently completed an updated and new transit-oriented development plan, TOD plan, that reestablished the site as a redevelopment opportunity to increase residential units downtown. The scope of the parking study in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen was to, first of all, the village hired a consultant, K L O A, to study the impact of not only a development of the village hall parking lot, but also using the village hall auditorium as a performing arts center. Both cases were looked at. This study included the area surrounding village hall, which is outlined in yellow, and also counted parking lots in select areas, both public and private, and looked at utilization of those lots, as indicated by the stars on the map. Parking was surveyed during weekdays, both court days, court is held on weekdays at village hall, and on non-court days. Also on weekends, though the one Saturday it was that they surveyed was during a farmer's market and during Fall Fest for utilization of the lot and also non-event weekend days. The study concluded that parking demand could be met for both projects if recommendations of the study were followed, and these included the acquisition of the South Suburban Mass Transit District lots, this Harwood lot and the Park Avenue lot, which the village has done, shared parking agreements for overflow parking with private lots such as St. John Neumann across Dixie Highway, and the transfer of Harwood Avenue from, it's currently controlled by IDOT, state of Illinois, to the village in order to convert the street to one-way and to add angled parking on that street. We recently adopted a new transit-oriented development plan that focused on increased activity proximity to the train station, safer routes for pedestrians, and more residential housing downtown to support local businesses and to increase pedestrian activity. Population density in the downtown, we found, in this plan is lower than the village as a whole, which presents opportunities for infill and new residential development, particularly next to the train station. The village hall parking lot was again identified as an opportunity for new residential development. Significant land downtown is dedicated to parking, however much of it is fragmented. The plan organized parking into zones so that we could strategically look at allocation of parking and repurpose any underutilized spaces for development. So this is part of this area, this zone here, the village hall, includes the village hall parking lot. Another goal of the plan was to foster investment in downtown. This includes putting those tax-exempt properties back on the tax rolls and building on the strong base of longstanding businesses with new businesses, which we continue to do. So you can see from this image that investments in downtown through new developments, preservation of existing buildings and landmarks. This includes new construction and redevelopment of the metro station, which is a twenty-million-dollar investment. The Hartford Building with thirty-six apartments, that's the first new housing development downtown since twenty-ten. Homewood Brewing Company. Significant investment in aging buildings such as the Gatchock House, the Ridgewood Tap, and the Hibbing Building. New restaurants, Berxstein, Stony Point Grill, expansion of Copper Still, Martini Bar, and a renovation of Starbucks. The success and level of investment have led to another proposal for the redevelopment of the village hall parking lot. So the current proposal is for residential development once again. The building itself would be this gray area. It would be fifty-nine units, five-story building, with interior parking that accommodates the need for the apartments and on-surface parking that would accommodate visitor parking. The site plan would also include a secured area for public safety vehicles, accessible parking for visitors in this area, and parking for fire and police staff on site. The current parking plan, the current parking lot serves three major groups: staff, village hall staff, visitors, and events. And village hall staff requires about twenty-five to thirty spaces. The plan recommends that staff utilize private parking, which would mean an agreement with St. John Neumann Church, and would also mean pedestrian improvements on Dixie Highway to connect the parking lot to village hall. Visitors include short-term village hall businesses and accessible parking. Both can be accommodated on Chestnut Road with new signage posted for thirty minutes of village hall visitor parking only. And events, including the farmer's market, village hall auditorium events, downtown business events, downtown dining and entertainment, these groups could use the Harwood parking lot and the Park Avenue parking lot, which is connected, which will be connected when the train station opens with a new lighted tunnel. So if you can look just in general at the amount of spaces that are available, we are losing a hundred and seventeen spaces. We have gained the Harwood Avenue parking lot. We have gained the Park Avenue parking lot. And we will retain public safety lot and that we are looking to negotiate an agreement with private lots. So this net change, just in general, is thirty-one new spaces. If we take into account on weekends, the space that's available, the net change is one hundred and fifty-seven public spaces because these lots that used to belong to the South Suburban Mass Transit District are now public lots and are available for you during events and weekends and weekdays. So our next steps, currently, we are looking at internally-lit public parking lot sign to provide better identification. We're also looking at pole signs and directional signs to to direct people to the public parking lots. We have been marketing them on social media, and we are continuing that campaign. These signs should be installed this week or next week. We're working on that. And the redevelopment agreement for the village hall parking lot, the developer estimates a groundbreaking in April of twenty-twenty-five. We are working to secure private parking for village staff. We are working to secure private parking for village staff. That's in process. We're making improvements to the crosswalks on Dixie Highway. This is in our budget so that we can assure that it's safe to cross Dixie Highway to get to the parking on the other side. We are also looking at, looking at and in the process of doing major improvements to the metro and public parking lot on Harwood and also looking at this local access to and control over Harwood, which will give us 24 new spaces. Thank you. And that's.
Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, one comment was about Park Avenue parking off of the map.
Yes.
To the bar. But how likely that St. John's it was parking? I mean, I thought that in the past that there was an issue with them not approving of some village sponsored events. And so are they gonna, is there, you know, unconditional on what events we're having?
We, we had an agreement previously with them that expired and we did actually renegotiate that agreement a year ago. We decided not to go forward with it because we were uncertain what would happen with the new mass transit lots. And so I have reached out to the Archdiocese and we are in negotiation with them. It's, it's.
And it would be like unconditional, it wouldn't be, I don't like that.
It would not be able to. Exactly. Very good question.
And as you know, the, the leadership of the church has changed from, I remember that. So the mayor has met with the pastor, we've had several meetings with the pastor. I think we have an excellent relationship. Actually, some members of the board actually sit, actually, I would assume, attend the church. So I think we have some really solid relationships to move forward.
Any other comments? Board comments? I'm sorry, did you raise me? Sir?
It is, well, we have a, we, right now, we have a letter of intent with HCF2 Homewood LLC. It is a portion, the, it's a part of the group that did the Hartford Building.
Any other questions?
The, the five-story building is not going to be mixed-use. It'll just be.
Just residential, only residential, as, as proposed now.
Is, is mixed-use on the table? Having more things in the ground floor to make it more of a community space?
It would be with perhaps another developer, but not at this time.
Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Parking garage under that building?
Well, the first floor will be parking, but it will be parking for the residences of the building.
If board comments, Trustee Willis.
Are we able to access the invitation?
Yeah, well, we can put it, we can put it on the website. We, it's not, right. It's not currently, but we can put it on the website.
Thank you for the excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I, I spoke, I spoke already.
The mayor's captivated.
Yeah, I, I love it. And I love the, the fact that this study has indicated that we will actually gain spaces. Great job, Angela.
Trustee Roman.
So I have said before that I, I probably understand better than anybody up here because housing is my day job. How much housing is needed, affordable housing, let me add, affordable housing is needed in our community. It just kind of, in my opinion, feels rushed, I think. And I know we're talking about a parking study here, not a development. But I feel like we've had so many changes in our downtown area since 2019 and all of this makes complete sense. And if it works out this way, it's great. But we're trying to build up the farmer's market. We have lots of new restaurants. There's lots of changes coming and this to me personally just, I know we've added spaces, everything, it just, in my opinion, I think we should let the dust settle from where everything has already changed in our downtown area before we make another big change like this. That's my.
Trustee Opitz.
I guess I have to echo with what Trustee Roman has just said. I feel like we need to slow this down a little bit. Could you please tell me what was the April 25th or April 2025 date for groundbreaking for what?
For the new residential building.
Okay, so that really does not give us a lot of time to take this to the people. And so we had said that there were going to be so many meetings getting to the residents as to what this is going to be. And I have to echo with what Trustee Roman has said, this is way too fast. And I think that I would like to see more studies done. I would like to see what the people have to say and getting in front of them, meeting them where they are at. Not just in this room, not just in this building, but where we can go out into the public and meet up with them. Also, I'm very concerned with the walking distance as what Trustee Roman had said, with the events, with building a brand-new farmer's market. In the last study that we had, it should be nothing more than a five-minute walk to your destination from where you park to where you're going. This is definitely more than five minutes. It's more than five minutes for your employees then as well. So my view on that is slow the roll and let's get it back to the people so they can review the very important detailed information.
Go right ahead.
I guess also, I would really, I, I hope that we have all of these additional pieces in place before we continue the conversation on the development. Like, can we guarantee that the additional parking will be on Harwood? Can we guarantee that the parking will be at St. John Newman? Because I mean, I don't know if I necessarily agree with the five-minute thing. I used to walk from the metro station to my office. I just made from St. John Newman to across the street to village hall.
It depends on the person.
Like, that could be the same distance as, well, right, not ADA, but that could be the same distance as the back of the lot. I just want to, I just think that we need to make sure all of this is actually in place before we continue the conversations of the development.
I think you have, excuse me, please. Trustee Opitz, Trustee Opitz, please. Are you finished, Trustee Roman? Okay, go right ahead.
This was also handed out earlier today from Mr. Haney as far as an agreement, a parking agreement with Stony Point Grill, allowing parking to be in exactly where we're going to be building this development. This is valet parking. So that's why we have to pull back and really look at this a little bit more.
So just, just a little clarification. So Stony Point reached out to the village a couple of weeks ago and asked us if they could possibly do a valet service from Stony Point. Stony Point is doing, is doing amazing. They're, they're really successful and, and to kind of clear some space around Stony, Stony Point, they requested to do valet. So they requested for two spaces directly on Ridge, on Ridge Road, directly in front of the restaurant and the ability to park in the public parking lot. So we do not have an agreement. Rather, we've just directed them to park valet in a public parking lot.
Certain times.
So it's not an agreement. It's just.
It's on the weekends.
Correct, after four o'clock. So just wanted to clarify, it's not a, not an agreement, not a lease.
If I could speak again?
Sure.
But once again, it's exactly where this development is supposed to be. So I feel like, okay, now we're moving, just check our pieces, test pieces, whatever you want to call them. So I would like to see something a little bit more tangible before we move forward and take this to the people.
To Trustee Roman's point, I think it's a very good idea. We have everything in place as far as agreements with St. John Newman. And we have the jurisdictional transfer where we can have those angle parkings as well. That was a good point. We'll get that done. The planned development for the village hall parking lot brings in approximately 59 units, so assuming that'll be around 100 people that will shop and eat and work in our downtown. It's exactly what we're trying to do. So with that direction, would you please get back to us after you have those agreements?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The omnibus vote, Mr. Thomas. And if somebody could flip the light on back there. We'll get this.
Board is asked to accept the 2023 annual report of the police department. The next three items relate to a special use permit to operate a childcare center at 18341 Dixie Highway. The board is asked to pass ordinance MC 1084 amending the zoning ordinance as it relates to childcare centers. The change will allow the childcare center as a special use in the B2 downtown transition zoning district. The stipulations are that they operate in a freestanding, single-use principal building and must be at least 3,000 square feet in Rose floor area. The board is asked to pass ordinance MC 2322 approving a map amendment for the property at 18341 Dixie Highway from R2 single-family residence zoning to B2 downtown transition zoning district. The board is asked to pass ordinance M2323 allowing a childcare center as a special use permit at 18341 Dixie Highway subject to the applicant providing a revised site drawing, restrip, restriping the parking lot for 16 parking spaces in the rear and provides an ADA accessible handicap space on the site before the village issues a business license for any building permit associated with the proposed use. The board is asked to pass resolution R3203 for the 2024 vehicle and equipment leasing program between the village and BMO Harris Investment Company LLC, which will allow for the replacement of seven vehicles and equipment that are past their useful life and will assist the village to better manage cash flow. Five of the vehicles are for public works. One is for the police department and one is for the building department. The board is asked to approve a budget amendment of $70,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act funds waive competitive bidding due to acquisition of a vehicle for the police department from a vendor through a cooperative purchasing program and through the purchase, equipment installation and outfitting of a Ford utility interceptor from Curry Motors Fleet of Frankfurt through the suburban purchasing cooperative in the amount of $69,914. The board is asked to authorize President Hofel to enter into an amended service agreement for traffic signal maintenance with MEAD Inc. of Willowbrook for a cost of $198.83 per location per month in a total amount not to exceed $29,825.64 from January through December 31, 2025. The board is asked to approve the renewal of the 2022 contract for sidewalk survey and saw cutting or grinding of trip hazards with Universal Concrete Grinding LLC of Gharad, Ohio for a unit price of $32.63 each for an amount not to exceed $171,960. Board is asked to award the 183rd Street Bydok railing replacement to Kay Brothers Fence of Mokina, the lowest responsible bidder, for the demo, for the demolition, removal and replacement and installation of 810 feet of fencing located along 183rd Street Bydok in the amount of $50,391 and approve the purchase of 10 additional inventory replacement panels for $240 per panel for a total cost of $52,791. Board is asked to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $55,000 from American Rescue Plan Act funds for asbestos abatement work at the property at 17900 Dixie Highway to Nationwide Environmental and Demo LLC of Frankfurt Park, the lowest responsible bidder for a total amount not to exceed $148,800. This work is to repair the site for the future water power on the property. The board is asked to pass resolution R3204 that makes available for public inspection, the redevelopment plan and project and the qualification report for the proposed North Halsted redevelopment project area. The proposed tax increment financing district will include properties on the west side of Halsted Street, south of 175th Street, including the former Walmart property. Walmart store has been vacant since February 2023.
The item L.
Sorry, meeting cancellation of December 24, 2024. Approve the cancellation of the regular meeting of the board trustees scheduled for December 24.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings.
And there's just one clarification for item G. The cost per location is $192.83 and the not-to-exceed amount is $20,825.64. It's a little lower than what you meant.
Good, good. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to any of these items? Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones.
Item D, where it says, number two, the applicant must provide one ADA accessible handicap space. Is that the minimum? Can they have two as opposed to one before the license is issued?
It's the minimum. That's the minimum. Okay.
Trustee, I have nothing. Trustee Mason. Trustee Roman.
Is the owner of the childcare center here tonight? Can she tell us a little bit about her plans of the childcare?
You have a. You, you have a beautiful building. You have a great location. Tell us what your plans are.
Okay.
Tell us what, tell the audience what it is.
Sure. I've been a licensed daycare provider for the last 10 years. I started right here in Homewood. My husband and I purchased our first home in Homewood. Never thought we would have kids, but we did eventually. And so we had to move out of our home. So we reside in Frankfurt, but our children still come to HF Park District. We frequent Homewood and Flossmore a lot. And so basically, I've been looking for the perfect, perfect space since last year when I gifted myself for my 10th year anniversary to move from family childcare to a commercial center. A lot of parents, a lot of moms and dads, they don't have, they're, they have to go to work. And it's hard to leave your kids and everyone isn't as lucky and blessed as I am to be home to stay, stay home with their children and raise them and have high-quality childcare. I actually reached out to the gen deals who are the owners of the building on Facebook. I did a whole bunch of research. I couldn't find anything on the building. And time lapses. Well, so I was going to build in a building, trying to find the perfect spot. One of the main things I was running into was the playground area because now traditional, daycare has shifted on commercial and commercial centers to retail spaces and it's not safe. So a lot of retail centers are made to have playgrounds in the back or inside or part of the parking lot on this unsafe condition for the children. So I was very ecstatic when he called me after like four months of sending that Facebook message. I didn't even know I was reaching out to the correct person. But he told me he had a deal that fell through and that he was interested and we were able to talk more and I was telling him my plan. And I want to mirror family childcare. I think parents really value intimate childcare settings, especially when winter comes, you know, there's children, they get all the viruses, right? So I just love nurturing and developing children. I'm hoping to have the support of the community and have a great staff. I'm hoping to grow and continue to, now that my babies are kind of older, to nurture this baby. I don't need any more little humans, but but that's my plan. So the building itself, it has been maintained on the interior and exterior, the structure, they have taken care of it. It just needs a lot of love to spruce it up and make it welcoming for families. I do plan to, one of the biggest challenges that I have, even though I'm a lab, I'm a home, family childcare provider, is some of the extracurricular activities within the community, such as at the park district, they're offered earlier than when parents can pick up because they're commuting from work or, you know, post-COVID is hybrid schedule or remote work, but they're still tied to work. They're not available to take their, get their children from school and get them to a program that starts at 4:00 PM, for instance. So my goal is to bridge that gap. So I know there's, I also want to introduce the children to different cultural things that a lot of children don't get to experience. My children took piano lessons at the local Melody Mart. My son took quite, I forgot the name of it, but he did the Tai Fonggo. Is that what it's called? And then there's the dance studio. My daughter did dance there. And we, we, she just did a majorette at HF, but that was the one where it was four o'clock and I'm rushing, you know, so I really want to help parents and the community, you know, bridge that gap, fill in those spots, getting the kids involved. So I really want to help parents and the community, you know, bridge that gap, fill in those spots, getting the kids involved in community. Because, I mean, that's how I grew up. I have my master's in public administration, so my background is this. But I went back to school, of course, um, to be direct and qualified because I really want to be hands-on and present every day at the center.
When, when do you plan to open?
My plan is February first. So, but that's all dependent on contractors. Um, like I stated, there, there's no need to do anything structurally or anything. It's just the updating and things like that. And then trying to beat the next snowfall, um, to get the parking, the parking lot done. Um, but I, I have my best foot forward. We've already started, um, although I was waiting for this meeting tonight. But, um, the outside is clear, so we're working on it. We're back on the inside.
Well-maintained, it's landscaped very nicely.
Yes.
It'll be very nice. This is on the corner of Dixie and Evergreen. And prior to your opening, get in touch with the service. We'll have you up at Meet the Merchants and you can tell the audience about your opening then. Thank you for being here this evening as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is a need in our community, so I'm very excited. I can't tell you how many people have asked me what the deal is with that daycare. Because everybody's looking for a daycare and like you said, there's strip mall daycare thing, whatever. So many people have asked me what is going on with that building, so I'm very excited that you're opening.
I just have one question. Will you have like a bus to take the children to different activities?
So yes, I'm working on that. So initially, I want to focus on the need, the initial need that I, um, have researched in the community. So I called, um, there's five other daycares in Homewood and other five, four, all have waiting rooms for their infant room and toddler room. So there is an urgent need to, for parents to have care, um, you know, if more people are entering the workforce and going back to work. Using the metro station that has been renovated. So eventually, yes, I do want to provide transportation for that after school program to help.
Okay, thank you again.
Yes, I do have a quick question. Thank you so much. I'm so glad that you're opening here. And I know you will be supported, well-supported. Um, just a quick question as far as drop-off then, so that'll be in the parking lot, correct?
Because there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
Have say of like two safety gates for the entrance and then the way I've already, uh, I've always been, um, family childcare. It's contracted times with the parents, so it's not like school where it's creating a traffic congestion. So, um, drop-off and pickups are standard.
Okay, that is wonderful because I have noticed the one on Ridge Road. Um, it's, it's interesting how parents are trying to get their kids out of the car, taking them around if they're not on the sidewalk. And then trying to get into the building. So safety first. And that's great to hear that you've already thought of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what's your name? What's the name of your business?
One thousand nine childcare.
I don't, I don't have any little humans to bring, but I'm wishing you the best and happy to see that side being you.
Okay.
Thank you.
With all that being said, may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Mason, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Hyperman.
Hi.
Trustee Mason.
Hi.
Trustee Roman.
Hi.
Trustee Elbit.
Hi.
The consent agenda is approved. General board discussion, trustee Willis.
Everyone has a space and happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, have a happy Thanksgiving and.
Remember to, uh, shop Homewood. Shopping season starts and, uh, holiday lights is a week from Friday and looking forward to it.
Trustee Mason.
A few things. Have, have a wonderful holiday. Have a safe Thanksgiving. Uh, if you're cooking, make sure you keep a safe zone for your kids and your pets. Um, also, if you're frying a turkey, I don't know if anybody fries turkey. I got a tip for making sure you don't have, hopefully, uh, chief will appreciate this. When, so there's no fires on decks. Don't, don't cook on the deck. Put your, put your turkey while it's wrapped in your pot, fill your pot with water. Take the turkey out, then mark the line where the water is, so you know how much oil to put in. That keeps you from trying to guess and spilling oil, hot oil all over the place. Am I right, chief?
Absolutely. Twenty-five feet away from any structure.
Also, coming up on the shopping season, uh, so please be aware of your surroundings. Um, try not to get preoccupied with your phone and parking lots when you're moving bags and moving purchases around. Just try to have a very safe environment. Homewood Police does a fantastic job. Already saw that the holiday patrol is going to be starting up very soon, where they'll have additional cars with lights on Halsted. But do your part to make sure that you stay safe. Keep an eye out for your neighbors. Have a great holiday.
Trustee Roman.
I have nothing to add.
Trustee Elbit.
I think everything has been said. Happy Thanksgiving, safe travels for everyone. Uh, Small Business Saturday is going to be on November thirtieth. Um, please check, uh, Explore Homewood if you're looking for particular stores and the different hours that they may have. And to echo what, um, uh, trustee Hyperman said, uh, come out for holiday lights on the December sixth. Starts at five until nine. So, and get your mug too.
Mr. Berman, is the truck still outside?
It is.
Uh, we have a new piece of equipment outside. If you could tell the audience about what's, what's out there.
Uh, we got board approval, uh, not too long ago for a new aerial truck for our L and M department. So, uh, it's a shared, uh, piece of equipment, uh, that our, uh, light techs that do the streetlights, uh, utilize. For hanging the banners and all the holiday lights. And, uh, we use it for, uh, tree removal, tree trimming, and it gets us a lot higher. Our old truck has thirty foot, this goes fifty-five. So much, uh, much gained, uh, paid on that, so. Oh, I'm working that one out. But yeah, yeah, that will, uh, it might just get a little off the ground.
It's, it's nice to see the large expenditure. So on your way out, take a look at the new piece of equipment that's outside. Mr. Haney.
Also a reminder, Village Hall will be closed on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Celebration of Thanksgiving.
With that, may I have a motion to enter into a short executive session to discuss potential litigations?
Second.
Been moved by trustee, uh, Willis, seconded by trustee Elbit. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Hyperman.
Hi.
Trustee Mason.
All right.
Trustee Roman.
Hi.
Trustee Elbit.
Hi.
Please stand adjourned, but thank you all.